Hi, good evening. It's six o'clock, June 27, 2018. I'd like to open the zoning board appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live through national TV. So next, if we could say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at the end of the meeting tonight, we're going to reorganize the board for the upcoming calendar year. And sitting on tonight's first hearing will be our four regular board members, as well as Brad on the first row. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
Three Treasure Lane, ours, Michael Panowski and Louise McDevitt request a written finding under Article 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an enclosed deck addition on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 90, parcel 66, Mashpee, Mass.
Somebody here from Treasure Lane?
Yes, sir.
Come right up. So for the record, please, give your name and address, please.
Michael Panowski, Three Treasure Lane.
Okay. If you would just review us exactly what you want to do.
Well, we want to do basically an enclosed deck. Started out as a screen report, doors are insulated, rebuild down, six by six posts, and a little over ten feet, four tenths of feet inside. Ten and a half feet deep and sixteen feet wide.
Okay, so it's already there. Are you doing it as enclosed again?
No.
You're expanding it?
There is not. This is on the west side.
Got it. Okay. Can I make? Please.
Question, is this going to be heated, conditioned?
No, not currently. We have a propane heater.
Do we leave the door open?
We could, but basically, we're not planning on heating. If we ever got central heating system, we have to.
Okay. We'll get the lot coverage here.
That's what I'm looking for.
I don't see it.
I'm just doing the same thing.
Do you know what your proposed lot coverage is going to be?
Um, I do not.
What's on the application? Okay. I don't know what the setbacks are.
What's on there? So is that there?
So yes, is this a pre-existing non-conformity use, Mike?
Uh, yes. That's why it's a written finding.
Right, that's what. And so what is pre-exist-- what is the non-conformity that exists today, I'm wondering?
Probably a lot size.
There's setbacks.
Okay. So forty-one?
Well, top three.
Yeah.
Two front.
Two fronts.
Yeah, it's quite a lot, too.
So they need forty, yeah.
So we've got four-- we've got forty-one here already. Too close here.
The house is thirty-nine.
That's an existing.
Right.
Of course, we don't even know what they're--
Twenty-five on the rear, but that's a side setback, right?
Yep.
That's the problem from Treasure Lane.
But then we get forty-one is...
The house is non-conforming.
So the side yard would be the twenty-five feet to the addition, which meets the setback criteria?
Yes.
Yep.
So this is a basic--
So he's not making it more la-- more non-conformant?
Well, that's what the board has to make that determination.
Well, but from a setback standpoint here--
Correct, no. But we need to--
My office has no issues.
Right.
I don't think it's an issue, but we need to-- we need lot coverage.
Absolutely.
Is it on the application? Probably not certified, though.
If it's not even close, it doesn't really--
Well, you can almost do it, right?
I wish you knew what the existing was, so you can do the math, I think.
How do you know the lot is a hundred by a hundred?
Well, it has a-- it happens here. That-- the lot is ten thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet.
Right.
But we don't know how many square feet. You get an existing shed, existing deck, existing dwelling. We need to know the square footage of that is, so we can determine what the lot coverage is percentage-wise.
Yeah, and actually, the one deck I believe that you have down on the north side of the house, that's a stone patio, I saw that.
No, there's one on the front that says existing deck.
Okay, yeah, that's all right.
Yeah, the stone-- I didn't count the stone patio.
Okay.
But we need to know-- it's probably five, but we need to--
What's the dimension of your house?
Thirty-two by twenty-four, seven hundred and sixty-eight feet. Four feet.
Seven sixty-eight.
So we got ten thousand?
Uh, the shed is eight by twelve.
Okay, what about the deck?
The front deck is fourteen by eight.
And the proposed addition is ten seventy-five by sixteen?
Yes.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Ten seventy-five, ten point seven five feet by sixteen.
Gotham Man, what is that total?
Hold on, I'm still--
Calculator.
I need all the, um, the lots, ten thousand two hundred and forty-eight.
Yep.
The house is what, thirty?
Seven sixty-eight.
Seven sixty-eight is the coverage on the house?
Yep.
The shed is what?
Ninety-six.
The deck on the front is what?
It's eight by fourteen.
One, one-twelve.
And the addition is what?
Ten by, ten point seven five by sixteen.
Calculator, ten seventy-five by sixteen?
One seventy-two.
One seventy-two.
All right, you want to add the--
So you got a total?
Ninety-six, one-twelve, seven sixty-eight, one-seventy-two.
Eleven forty-eight.
Eleven thousand forty-eight in the lot. One thousand, one thousand--
Yeah.
Can you take them a lot?
What's the lot size?
Ten thousand, so it's like ten percent.
What's the lot size?
Ten thousand two hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah, it's not even--
It's well over. I know, usually we ask for it--
What is the exact lot coverage?
Yeah, but this is a writing and information.
I might as well do it for the record.
We'll have to put it on the application in the future.
Okay.
What did you say the lot was, what size?
Ten thousand two hundred and forty-eight. So it's less than ten percent.
Right, we'll just get a number for the record.
Thousand divided by what?
Ten point nine, ten point nine percent.
I got nine point seven, so.
Yeah, I think nine point seven makes more sense. It should kind of be under ten percent.
Nine point seven?
I must have rounded up.
You did.
Okay.
So it's way under--
Nine point seven seven is the lot coverage. Any questions, comments, concerns?
That is a condition, that the lot coverage will not exceed nine point seven with the addition.
You think we should do that? What if I blew it?
Good stuff to read in.
We're still under twenty percent. Way, I think we just remain silent.
I do, too.
Questions, comments, anyone?
No, get some reading to do, I think.
All right, let's read in some comments here. Sharon, would you like to read the first one?
Inspections, Three Treasure Lane. The area is zone R3 in a pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a written finding under Article 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to oppose a deck addition. I have a presumption on this prepared for jurisdiction.
You can point out?
Board of Health, the addition will be on post, so no setback issues with septic system. Septic is good for three bedroom.
Right. That's it, Sharon?
That's it.
Okay. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments? Seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
And I will deal with lot coverage, I think. So, all right, yes, I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue to Michael Panowski and Louise McDevitt, McDivitt, of Three Treasure Lane, a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to offer construction, a closed deck addition on property located in R3 zoning district, MAPS 90, parcel 66, Mashpee, Mass. Issuing the written-- issuing the written finding, the board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 48, Section 6. I make reference to a site plan, Three Treasure Lane, Mashpee, Mass, prepared for a batalotti construction, Fasano scale, one inch equals twenty, dated October 13, 2001, revised 10/29/01, signed by Arnie H. Ajala, P.E., PLS 10/29/01. I'd also make reference to house drawing, Michael Panowski and Louise McDevitt, Three Treasure Lane, Mashpee, Mass, PO Box 153, Westover, Vermont, 05356, 802-681-6120, 781-820-2133. Plan Page 1 depicts the proposed addition, sixteen feet, closed roof, existing shed, existing dwelling. Page 2 depicts existing home and proposed addition, existing shed. Page 3 depicts existing home with existing windows, sliding door, framing. Also make reference to the conditions upon the town that were read into the comment-- comments that were read into the record. And also, the reference is made that the enclosed deck would not be heated.
Correct.
And also, I'd like to make reference, at the time of building application, you should submit to the building officials the fact that it does meet minimum lot coverage, or does not exceed minimum lot coverage.
Maximum lot.
Or maximum lot coverage, yes.
So, and the actual lot coverage will be nine point--
Well, I'm not sure of that calculation, because there's--
There's a little shed in the back.
There's a small shed in the back.
Like six by--
My attitude, as long as it does not exceed--
Whatever.
If it's eighteen percent, it wouldn't bother me. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I just want to make sure that he's not over--
It wasn't closely--
I think he's way under, but I just want to make sure.
Okay, do we have a second?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
That's the way to handle it.
Sharon, you'll sit over there next to him.
I hate that when I do that.
Thank you.
Don't blame me. Can you mind if I--
You had nothing to do with it, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're blaming him.
I'm not blaming anyone.
Speech back.
I found it. I will be abstaining from this next vote.
Okay.
I just-- that's from Mike.
Okay.
You're welcome to use--
All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
Nine Offway Bay Road. Editioner William R. Hanny requests an extension to an existing special permit, SP-2012-30, under Article 174-25.9 of the zoning bylaws that was issued back in July 2012 for a landing, stairs, pier, ramp, and float on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAPS 99, parcel 49, Mashpee, Mass. Mary E. Trokey, trustee.
Okay, so Ron is going to step down, so it'll be us five. Hi.
Good evening, members of the board, building commissioner. My name is Brian Wall, I'm an attorney. I represent tonight the petitioner, William Handy, as well as the property owner, Mary Trokey, trustee of the ZOCH, with the subject property is a vacant piece of land at Nine Offway Bay Road. And as we heard in the notice, in 2012, the property owner obtained a special permit from the board that was unanimously approved for a dock ramp and float at the property. Because the property was vacant, the permit came with a condition that the construction of the dock was subject to construction of a house first. The land is still vacant, a house has not been constructed, and the permit is going to expire in August 6th of this year. And so the applicant, because they had spent a significant amount of money and time on engineering, the first project, they don't want to lose that, they don't want to have the permit expire. So they're asking the board to make a modification specifically with regard to the expiration date, and give the applicant another two years to build the house.
Is that the first?
Okay, what do you mean by first project?
Is that the way it was ever--
Yeah, the extension to the existing special permit.
If I may, counselor, you made a statement, first project. What do you mean by first project? You kind of got me lost on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't-- I don't think I said that. If I did--
Yeah, because I wrote it down when you said it, because they spent so much money on the first project.
No, what I meant was, they spent so much money on the project, in other words, getting the permit, the engineering, the soft costs, the time and money to get the permit.
All right.
That's what I--
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. How come they didn't build a house?
I'm not sure exactly. I think--
What, 2012?
Yeah. I guess they intended to do it, if you look at the project, there's a house shown on it with a pool and a septic system.
Yep.
So it was clear to me that they were going to go forward. I didn't represent them in 2012, so I don't-- I wasn't part of the original filing, but clearly, they had a comprehensive project that they were going to go forward with. But for reasons that aren't known to me, they did not. But they don't want to lose, again, the, you know, the plan for the dock, it's rather detailed, a significant amount of money was spent on that, so they'd rather not have to do it again if they don't have to.
Where does your client stand with the other of the projects, conservation and such? Have those been also extended as well? I mean, you're talking, you know, six years here, and regulations change, so, because I really don't want to know, but I have to know enough to be dangerous. Has there been any changes from six years ago, as far as conservation, waterway regulations, that would have an impact now?
Can I read conservation?
Yeah, read.
Nine Offway Bay Road. The wetland permit order conditions for this project, which also included construction of a single-family home, has expired, thus the applicant cannot proceed with any construction of any structures or-- and/or clearing disturbance of any land within wetlands jurisdiction on the lot until such time as they apply for and receive approval for a new permit from the Conservation Commission.
So they don't have anything with conservation?
So they haven't been in conservation yet?
No.
Board of Health had no comment.
So I respectfully, if that was Mr. McManus, I didn't get a chance to talk to him about that, but he may not have realized that the permit extension act has extended those permits, and they're still valid for another year. So that would be my response, that the permits are still valid. As far as the building commissioner's question about zoning, the reason why the permit was asked for and granted was that the pier is longer than seventy feet over wetlands, and so it requires a special permit.
Right, that I understand.
That hasn't changed. As far as whether the wetlands regulations have changed, if they have to reapply for a permit, I don't know, I'd have to look at that.
That's a report we received from Conservation, that they do have to--
Yeah, I mean, that's entirely up to them.
Right.
We don't make any decisions on that.
Right.
You know, once they give the okay, and they say, "We don't have a problem with you putting that dock in," to my knowledge, we've never said, "Well, you can't do it," even though they said, "Good."
Right.
That's not the issue. The whole issue with this thing is that the house has to be built first, and you have to get an occupancy permit, a certificate of occupancy, before you can start the dock.
Right, and that's why I'm here. And the permit says that right on the last paragraph--
It does.
--of the full page. And I assume that, too, you have to have a primary use--
Correct.
--and accessory use.
Right.
So that's why that--
So, you know, I'm not sure what they're waiting for, but whatever. I don't personally have any issues with just extending it, but all the same stuff would apply.
And that's all we're asking, it's just that the only request is to change the expiration date. All of the terms and conditions, we continue on.
We're in the bottom line.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we haven't got that far yet. What concerns do you have?
Well, one of the concerns I have is looking at this plan here, counselor, and this is one from Christopher Coster and Associates Inc. And I got to take my glasses off just to read the date on this, but this appears to be going back to 2012. It's not really my issue, it's, once again, it's going to have to be a Conservation, Harbor Master issue, because so much time has gone by. But according to this plan here states, there are no known marked navigational channels or moors with an unmet proposed flow. So I know that's going to have to be addressed back before Conservation, because six years ago, six years have passed since this was documented, there could be any kind of changes. So I know it's on my purview, all I'm doing is letting you know that will probably have to be readdressed, but, because you don't know what changes has transpired. Six years is a long time. As you can tell, there's drama in some neighborhoods, it goes from night to day. So this is-- this plan here may be totally inaccurate.
Couldn't the FEMA map change, too?
Oh, FEMA map has changed, there's no question about that.
So the setbacks might all be wrong and everything?
Well, the flood zone could have been moved, but that's on the building end of it. You know, so as we've seen, you're losing coastal line, and the line just moved up. There were areas that were never in the flood zone that FEMA now is dictating that you are in it, so. My point is, I just think that the information on this plan that I had before me may be dated. I mean, six years is a long time.
One minor concern I have is the potential, if we approve this, what happens if Conservation doesn't? I don't want us to supersede--
Well, can we condition it upon Conservation's approval?
May I?
I don't know. Because you're the one who looked at that kind of--
I don't know, I mean--
See, normally, normally Conservation, you have to go to Conservation first, not normally skip Conservation and come here.
Right.
Highly unusual.
Would you have to condition it also on a plan being-- updated plan being, would that be something that's going to Conservation?
Let me just make one comment. There are many cases that we will condition a ruling, condition it on getting approval from Conservation. But when we've got an actual positive comment from Conservation, that they need to revisit this whole thing, I don't feel comfortable conditioning a ruling on this--
I understand.
--with Conservation comments, because Conservation has already made a comment to us. Many times Conservation has remained silent, and then we can say, "We condition it on Conservation giving their ultimate approval." But in this particular case, this is just me speaking, where Conservation actually has looked at this and has affirmatively said, "We need to look at this again," I don't feel comfortable saying approving something like this conditioned on Conservation. I would feel much more comfortable to postpone this until Conservation has had a formal-- uh, continue it, excuse me.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up, I'm in the same boat with you. Not that I like the project.
I do, too.
I don't have any issues with it.
What's the-- when do you expire?
So if you look at the special permit, it made a finding that the Conservation Commission approved the proposal and issued an order of conditions on June 26, 2012.
Right.
And so that falls within what's called the qualifying period for the permit extension act. And so an order of conditions is valid for three years from the date of issuance, so that would get us to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, right? Go with me, because I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician.
Either are me, by the way, sitting here, bro.
I was listening, but I'm honest, I can't even count. So 2006, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Yep.
And then you add four years to that, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So the permits are valid until June 26, 2019. And with all due respect to Drew, I-- he's an excellent conservation agent, he might not have thought of a permit extension act, he might have just said, "Oh, this permit's more than three years old, it's expired." That's my best guess, but I'm certain that those permits are still legally in effect.
Mike? If I may, through the chair, has your client even reached out to schedule a hearing with the Conservation Agent or the Conservation Commission at this time, or no?
No, because the permits are still valid for another two, oh, year, another year.
Well, then there's no per se, I'm receiving any urgency, I'm not speaking for the board.
I agree.
I don't even get the vote, which is the best thing about sitting here, by the way. I'm just along for the ride. But if there's no real urgency, because I know you were talking about August, so that's what kind of threw me, now you're talking, you know, 2019.
Well, the special permit's valid for two years.
Right.
The order of conditions is valid for three.
Okay.
The special permit is going to expire in August of this year.
Right.
So I guess what my suggestion is, if the board did a continuous to the next hearing, which would be what date?
July 11.
Which is two weeks away.
Yeah.
If you can meet with Drew, and if he comes up with a different letter, then the universe keeps spinning, you know, and then the 11th, it's, you answer the board's question, I don't mean to speak for the board, but I'm--
I'm just trying to protect them, if there is something that expires in August, if he started the process now, and we have to continue for different reasons, is he okay?
Yeah, but July 11th is not a bad--
But just in case for somebody, July, you know, Drew, you know, next week's a holiday, Drew didn't get back to him, Drew couldn't meet with me, I'm just trying--
Well, he's going to be on the phone tomorrow with Drew to see when Drew can meet with me.
Does he get any kind of relief extend on that August date, because he started now?
I think what we need from Drew is just a positive affirmation that, in fact, this permit is valid. Right now, he has given us something in writing that it is not. I'd like to see something in writing that says it is. I don't think it takes--
And I don't have any--
--a big meeting or anything, Brian. I think you can just call him and tell him what you sent to the ZBA is--
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't even want to call it an oversight on his part, it's just something--
No.
The permit extension act is an anomaly that was enacted for the economic--
It does evolve.
Yeah, unless you think of it, you just, it's not something normal. You probably just didn't even think of it. I'm happy to do that, I appreciate your concern. I happen to be here next week, or, I'm sorry, the 11th, anyway.
Okay.
So why don't we continue it if the board's permission?
Sure. I think that would be--
I'll talk to Drew about the permit extension.
Well, my advice is, talk to him tomorrow, because I have no idea if he plans on taking POTS of next week off--
Great point.
--because of July.
Yeah.
So don't let this discussion go by the wayside. I'd be on the phone tomorrow, and I will also make it a point, if I see him tomorrow morning, to let him know to expect your call, and I'll give him a brief update on--
Sure.
--what the discussion will be about.
Okay.
That's the best I can do for him.
No, I appreciate it, and I'll--
Maybe you can give us an overview, if he thinks--
Do we want to read the rebuttal in an hour?
--there's any issues with you renewing this. Because as Mike said, some things have changed, FEMA map has changed, and he should know within five minutes--
Exactly.
--five minutes whether or not there's a potential issue, or, I'm sure there's not, one of those type of--
I'll talk to him about that, but I think my client's position would be, if the permits are valid, he still has another year to go under those.
That's fine.
Yep.
Fine, I just want to get everybody on the same page.
Got it, and I'm happy to--
Sharon has a question.
I just have a question, just for my information, this does not have to go through the Harbor Master because of the dock?
Well, that's the conversation that Conservation will have.
Okay.
You know, because it's under their proofing, so if there's--
I talked to the Harbor Master, he was going to give me a comment, but he must have got tied up today, but he was--
Maybe we'll have it by the 11.
Yeah. Do we want to read the rebuttal in an hour, or the next meeting?
Got it, and I'm happy to.
Sharon has a question.
I just have a question just for my information. This does not have to go through the harbor master because of the dock?
Well, that's the conversation that conservation will have.
Okay.
You know, because it's under their, uh, proofing. So if there's.
I talked to the harbor master. He was going to give me a comment, but he must have got tied up today. But he, he was.
Maybe we'll have it by the 11th.
Yeah.
Do we want to read the butthole letter now or the meeting?
Just read everything in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I can do it or you can do it.
You can do it.
Okay. All right.
Stop with inspections.
Inspection. Nine Aquay Bay Road. The area is zoned R3 and is in pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as high and is also in post-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as low. The applicant is seeking an extension on an existing special permit, SP dash 12 dash 30 under Article 174 dash 25 point I, point nine of the zoning bylaws that was issued back in July 2012 for a landing stairs, pier, ramp and float. Please note, there are no other structures on this site. This lot is empty. In a, in accordance to Article 174 dash three accessory use, a use incident in subordinate two and on the same law as principal use, a dock slash ramp is viewed as an accessory use. It is my position that the principal use would be a single family home in this area. As stated in the S, special permit 2012 dash 30 decision. As defined under section 174 dash 25 point I, point nine of the zoning bylaws, the proposal is an accessory use. Therefore, construction of the pier, ramp and float shall not commence until a house is built on the subject property and certificate of occupancy for the house has been issued. To date, no plans have been submitted for a building permit to construct a single family home, nor is there a single family home currently at this location.
Okay, I'll read the conservation unit. Okay, nine Aquay Bay Road. The wetland permit order of conditions for this project, which also included construction of a single family home, has expired. Thus, the applicant cannot proceed with any construction of any structure and or clearing slash disturbance of any land within wetlands jurisdiction on this lot until such time as they apply for and receive approval for a new permit from the conservation commission.
Board of health, no comments.
And I think we have a, a butthole letter, Sharon? Do you have that?
Charles M. Talion of 29 Aquay Bay Road, Mashpee, Mass. Jonathan D. Ferber's Chairman, Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, 16 Great Net Road, Mashpee, Mass. Dear Mr. Ferber, I am writing in regard of nine Aquay Bay Road petitioner, William Haney. I request the permission, petitioner's request be denied. If common sense were to prevail, Mr. Haney with the gracious decision of the zoning board had the right to build a dock six years ago. He should have. Now, six year la, six years later, he still has a piece of lousy configuration of law, land on a, on very shallow water next to a helicopter pad, which he can't sell because he's asking twice what it's worth. If Mr. Haney wanted to increase the value of his property to sell, he should have built the dock as soon as permission was granted. Thank you, Charles M. Talion.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, why don't we make a motion to continue? Would you like to make one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue nine Aquay Bay Road's petition. A petitioner, William R. Haney's request for an extension to an existing special permit, SP dash, uh, 2012 dash 30 under section 174 dash 25 dot 1, point 9 of the zoning bylaws that was issued back in July 2012 for a landing stairs, pier, ramp and float on property located in an R3 zoning district. This map 99 parcel 49 Mashpee, Mass. Mary E. Zoki trustee, continue to July 11th.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. I'll see you in two weeks.
Nothing decided? Send the papers down.
Yep. Here you go.
Great motion. You should do them all.
No, thank you.
Welcome, Ashwin.
Thank you. It's nice to be back. Did you miss us? I get over it.
Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
534 Catuit Road. Petitioner Augustine Lett requests a written finding under Article 174 dash 17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction and extension of existing deck on property located in Empire Five zoning district. Map 16 parcel 30 Mashpee, Mass. Owners for record Cherry and Robert Stivalletta.
Thanks. Get to the mic first, please. Hi, go ahead. Go ahead, tell us what, again, your name and address.
My name is Augustine Lett. I live at, um, 30, 38 Cresby Drive, Sandwich, Massachusetts. I am trying to help this petitioner to, um, address a situation where she had started with another contractor without a permit to, um, build an extension on a deck which was extended from four foot, extended a four foot from seven feet to give her a little bit more space for now to the front dock. And that, that extended it over the, um, the, the line of, um, where she should, the property line.
So it's an R5, is it? What are the setbacks?
So you're not sharing the site plan with anyone else?
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Didn't you get one? No, did you get, you guys didn't get one, huh?
What?
You, you didn't get a, no, these did you?
No, I got this.
I think he only gave us two because they don't have any down there, so I have to give it to them. There you go, guys.
This is just.
Hey, where is the?
I don't know, this is just good.
Yeah.
Oh, existing is.
Excuse me, sir, can you come up here for a moment, please?
Yeah.
The slide will go by my records. Is this the street right here?
This is the street right here.
Okay, this is the street.
It's not a corner lot, is it?
No.
Got it. So if you're looking at the map like this, folks, the street is over here.
We don't have one of those maps. You're the only one.
Really?
There's only two.
No copies?
There's only two.
Just the little one.
No, this is Catuit Road.
Oh, this does it.
This one's.
This one's Catuit Road.
The little one's.
The little one.
Okay, so 40 in the front. Do we know what the setback is already? No, there's no setbacks on it, is there?
There's no small.
The small one, it says it's 33.4 from the street.
33.4.
So I, I think this meant the big map is the existing deck. I think the small map is the proposed deck because they're completely different decks.
One of the staff will come up to explain it.
Do, are they completely different?
Yes, look at the angle of that coming up. Is this the existing deck now?
This is, um, we had, we had to have a survey. Surveyor came, came in and give us a redo the, the property lines to make sure that we, you know, what our setbacks and everything were. This here is the, is what the surveyor redid.
So this is existing.
Right.
This is what's there now. This is what you're proposing to do.
Right, exactly.
I can't, I can't see that. What, the little one?
The little one is the proposed deck.
So what changes, setback and what?
You got 30, from Catuit Road, you get 33.4.
Yep.
Side setbacks, you have 42.5 and that's, you know.
27.
Well, that's the house. In the back, you get 45.7, but I don't have, and I don't think it's an issue. Yeah, it's law covered because the existing law covers it's only 12%.
And so what is setback in Catuit Road, what's required?
40 from the front.
Got it.
So that's the pre-existing non-conforming use.
Which is why they're all for a written finding.
Right.
And what is it showing on that?
Is this more detrimental or previous to exist?
It doesn't say.
So we don't even know if they're, they're extending a non-conformity, right?
See, we don't know what the current is.
I agree, yeah, I agree. We, we got a picture of it, we don't have the setbacks from it.
Yeah, exactly. They got the proposed setbacks.
See, we don't know, sir, with that dimension, we don't know what that dimension is on there.
Right, I see that.
So we don't know if you're getting closer or staying the same or further away.
Well, what we, what they're proposing to do, the deck now is four feet. We, we're going to add another three feet onto the deck.
So it's going to get closer.
Closer.
So they're non-conforming.
So they're more non-conforming.
Yeah, it's a square lot. It's not a corner lot. Does it have any issues?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand where he was and where he's headed.
For his own sake, that's what I would.
Does that make sense?
It does. If he was pre-existing non-conforming, which I'm assuming he was.
Yeah.
He can extend that non-conformity. He cannot introduce a new non-conformity under a written finding.
Understood. I'm just trying to understand how much he's extending.
Exactly, and we can't tell from this.
Exactly, right, right.
I agree.
That's my point.
Okay, the question is, how come he's not looking for a variance?
Doesn't need to.
Isn't he proposing going closer?
He does, but he can extend the same non-conformity.
He can extend previously existing non-conformity.
As long as it's the pre-existing non-conformity, which it is.
Right.
And so our illustrious leader has, has chosen to say that he could, I presume, seek a written finding. But the only is, we, I just, we don't know.
We need better measurements.
We, we, it, the as-built, the, the as-built really, right?
Current.
Is, the current, which is an as-built, is not very, you know.
Because we couldn't even say how, if we were to grant it, we can't say how much we're granting. We don't know the distance.
Right.
All right, what am I reading here? I'm reading here, this is six feet wide here, right? And what's here, five feet?
That's four feet there.
That's four feet.
We want to go seven feet.
All right, so basically what's existing in the front is the deck is four feet wide. And they want to go another three feet out, so that's.
Which is fine, he can do that. Is there anywhere else yet?
They're here.
All they did was, yeah, but those are stairs, they don't count.
No, they don't.
Stairs don't count.
So you rip them the stairs out.
The stairs, the stairs is going to stay.
No, but I mean, it's not like that.
See, it's on the name.
Right.
Right, but it's just.
We taking this, we taking this.
You're squaring it off. That's all.
And you're saying stairs don't count and a setback anyway?
No, I'm saying the bylaws says the stairs don't count, yes.
So if I understand this correctly, if I'm looking at this small plan.
Right.
Where your setback under the proposed deck is 33.4 feet.
So the existing is probably 36.
The existing would be, exactly, they added three feet to the deck. So it was 36, so it was previously non-conforming because you required 40.
And he's expanding the non-conformity.
So we're extending a previous non-conforming situation.
And that's the only place you're changing and that's it.
Correct, correct.
So if a motion was made that states that the non-conformity, which is the front yard setback to Catuit Road, uh, is being, um, the non-conformity is being increased to, um, to a reduction of additional three feet.
Correct.
Uh, that is the reason for the written finding, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and the only reason?
The only reason why.
Okay, so that's pretty easy.
And what we have to determine as a board.
Whether it's.
Is if that.
Is more detrimental.
Extension of a previously existing non-conforming situation is more detrimental than what previously existed. Not more non-conforming, more detrimental.
Right. I just want to make sure that it would seem to me because the as-built isn't correct that we have to put something stating that it was approximately 36.4.
That's correct.
Pre-existing non-conformity.
And now it's 33.4.
Right.
And they can't go beyond that.
Right.
If we were to correct it.
That's correct.
I thought I needed to watch the end now.
Yep.
So the proposed law coverage is still going to be 12.0?
No, it'd be a little less.
Probably less.
No, a little more by about 10%, 1% or something.
Yeah, but it's not.
No, but that's going to be reflecting what this is.
Yeah, so it's still not, so it's still, it's wrong, no, I don't think it is.
Oh, this one?
You're looking at this?
I saw law coverage on the existing.
Yeah, it just says.
The big one.
Yes. That's what I'm looking at, the 12%. I think that's existing.
It said, look to the left of it.
Well, this is proposed.
I agree.
Yeah, but that says existing structures, house, deck and shed.
Right.
12, 12%.
You're making this hard for us.
I know, I know.
But it's never going to get, it's never going to get that even near 15%.
I know, but.
It's about 20.
I know, but I'm even saying 15.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I know it's 20, but.
How am I supposed to be doing this correctly?
I, I got you. I'm just trying to work through it, but I understand what you're saying. We did the last one this way. Or the one before the last one.
You know the story about two rights?
I know. Listen, you're the chief. I just make the motion, right?
Read your reports.
How are we going to connect, correct this for the future? This doesn't.
I think what, I would make this following recommendation, and I don't want to put a lot of pressure on Mary Ann, but Mary Ann, you may want to look at either the applicant shows existing and proposed law coverages or the plan show it. And they should show you clearly that, that it's, you know, they, that we have enough information, I guess. And I'm not trying to put too much pressure on you because some.
And you gave us a speech last, last time we met about you not having to do the figuring.
Right, because I don't want to figure it wrong. I have the applicant not.
What are we doing right now?
I got you. I got you 100%. I say my recommendation would be as follows. Let's get through one last one and say to Mary Ann, ask Mary Ann politely, as I just did, if she would do the board a favor and do the best she can to make sure in the future that all these things are clearly depicted. And if they're not clearly depicted.
Should be on the application.
Right, and the application that is not complete.
Right, what's going to happen is Mary Ann, that is going to look at me.
Right, right, and so, yeah.
While I'm sitting here, talk to me.
And I, and so I'm just asking if we can do that.
It's easy enough, it's an easy.
And let's try and get through this one and that we change it in the future and this gentleman, if we choose to approve it.
Brad, I think you're back on this one, right? So we're switching back and forth. This is you, Brad?
Well, actually, we were both on the last one.
Okay, but yeah, we're switching back to you, so it's.
And I can put something in the motion that.
So anybody have any issues with where Ron is?
No.
Suggesting we move on this.
If it's unclear, I'll, I'll state it again if you'd like.
No.
So this plan is inaccurate. It says existence is seven feet.
I think what you can do is what you did in the last one. Just address it in the, in the motion.
Do we know what the numbers are?
I'm going to read them in as matter of fact.
He's got them in the motion.
The pre-existing non-conformity is 30.
Did we read all the comments and everything?
We haven't got that far yet.
Well.
Well, we're just still having a discussion.
I was going to add two things to the motion if everybody felt it was okay. And that is, I was going to talk about the pre-existing non-conformity is and where it's going to because it's not depicted on the plan. I was also going to talk about law coverage that he has to prove to the inspector at the time of the building application that it meets and that.
Does not exceed.
It does not exceed the minimum, the maximum law coverage.
Correct.
Correct.
And so it could be handled that way. That's what I was going to do.
Going forward, we can do it differently.
Going forward, I would, I would ask that Mary Ann and Mr. Mendoza would work together on trying to put those, make those loose ends go away. And as infinite was, and their infinite was to be.
Correct.
Okay.
How's that?
I think that, that addresses any concerns that I might have.
All right, let's read in some comments. Sharon, you want to start?
All right, conservation, 534 Catuit Road. This property is in Wetlands jurisdiction. Order of health, no comment.
Inspections?
Inspections, 534 Catuit Road is the area is zoned R5 and is in pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a written finding under Article 174 dash 17 The applicant is seeking a written finding under Article one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws for reconstruction and extension of an existing deck.
Missing anything?
Nope.
All right, Ron, when you make this motion, I want you to condition it on having all of that stuff proved, that on lot coverage.
Lot coverage, and I'm gonna talk about the pre-existing non-conformity.
Part of the condition.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I got it. Right there. Got you covered.
Anything else? Anybody in the audience, I mean? Ron?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we issue to Augustine Lett of five thirty-four Kattuut Road. A written finding under one seventy-four seventeen of the zoning bylaws allow for reconstruction, extension of existing deck and a property, on property located in R five zoning district map sixteen parcel thirty. Mashemass, owner of record Cherry and Robert Stivaleta. Making the motion, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of written finding under Mass General laws forty-eight, section six. Uh, also make reference to a certified plot plan, owner of record Robert Cherry Stivaleta, five thirty-four Kattuut Road, Mashemass, oh two six four nine. Project five thirty-four Kattuut Road, Mashemass, sheet number one of one, date March twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Drawing file number Kattuut, five thirty-four, Stivaleta, E C P drawn by J V B, checked by M C, prepared by Cape Island Engineering. Signed by Matthew C. Coster, professional hand surveyor, number five two two eight two. Also make reference to building plan, deck alterations, five thirty-four Kattuut Road, Mashemass. Prepared by Bruce Devlin Designs, one dash seven seven four dash seven two two dash five six two three scale is noted, signed by Michael Cadillo, structural, excuse me?
Michelle.
Michelle.
Michelle, I'm sorry. Structural professional engineer, number three four seven seven four, dated five four eighteen. Also making reference to all, uh, it's conditioned upon all the town or department comments written in the record. Also, uh, the as-built plan, as submitted to this board, did not depict the front yard setback from, what's the name of the street?
Kattuut Road.
Kattuut Road.
It is our opinion that it's thirty-six point four, and that is a zoning, that is a non-conformity, pre-existing non-conforming use. It is now depicted through the math of three feet, a three feet deduction, uh, because that's the size of the proposed expansion to the deck, which would bring it down to thirty-three point four. Also, I wanna make reference to, there is no lot coverage depicted, and at the time of the application of the building permit. You must, uh, prove to the building inspector that you meet the maximum allowed lot coverage. Or you do not exceed the maximum lot, lot coverage for this project.
Well done.
Good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Give a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck. So we've got some work to do. Thank you.
Okay.
That's good. Very good. Nothing?
Hold there.
I remember that.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the first and only, no, first other business?
Twenty-one Wilson Grove, owner Dave Di Alisardo. To discuss a change to his approved written finding, finding two thousand sixteen dash twenty-seven. The board to determine if considering a minor or major modification. Also, the board to determine if an extension of a written finding is required.
Hi.
Hello. Save the best for last, I guess.
Devils in the details.
Yes. My name is David Delisandro, twenty-one Wilson Grove Mashpee. As she said, I want to discuss the written finding that you guys granted me two years ago. Brought some visuals, gonna get easier.
I remember it well.
To refresh your memory.
I do too.
Uh, it's a very small little house, and we're looking basically to add on this very small little extension to move the washer and dryer ins, inside the house.
I remember it.
I, I also have here, I think this was just in the files, uh, this is a paperwork, basically a letter, tells you, I mean, I'm looking to do. It also has the original written finding, there's a plot plan, and there's a, a diagram I'm gonna show you, but in case you guys can't see the diagram, it's on here. I do have, I made five copies. Basically, the reason why I'm asking for a, I'm looking to get an extension on the finding. Uh, I wanted to have this started two years ago, but unfortunately, my mother had, an eighty-year-old mother had an accident, she has, she passed away. And I've been dealing with her estate for the last two years. I was ready to do this in the spring to try and get it finished for this summer season. But my ninety-year-old father-in-law had a stroke, so I've been dealing with him now. And I've also lost my contractor to another project, so my finding ends in July eighteenth. I'm working with a couple of new contractors now against the prices, but my fear is I may not be able to get it done by July eighteenth. Uh, I was gonna apply for the building permit myself, so at least it secured that. But I was told if I did that, that I'd have to assume all the responsibilities of the building, so I'd rather have the contractor deal with that, so. Um, right now, I'm looking for, I'm actually looking for four requests. The first one is, can I, can I extend the finding? Uh, I'm stating ninety days, but I'm certainly hoping it's done much, you know, much before that time period. Do you want me to discuss the other requests first, or you wanna discuss?
No, don't go right ahead.
Okay. The other, uh, the second request I had was, my wife had, uh, because of, she decided she wanted a closet in the actual building. The, this wall here. This wall was, the finding states we're extending the wall five point four feet. It was written in the finding, I wanted to extend the wall additional one point three feet, which allows us to add a closet in the actual addition. I talked to Mike about it as far as the building permit, and he said because of written finding, I had to ask you, ask the board first, can I move the wall, you know, one point three feet closer?
You're not moving outside the current footprint, are you?
No, it's just, e- everything is on top of it. Every, everything is being built on top of the existing deck.
There's no increase in lot size, all it is is, yeah, it's just, I mean, a lot coverage size. He, he just wants to move it roughly.
He's enclosing more space than he was gonna close it for.
And it's, it's not what the board looked at, and I'm saying the best thing to do is, is come back to the door. But the time was perfect, because you were just here in my office like last week. And was saying, this is the best time to come in. The building department supports the applicant on this, I mean, it's such, in my view, it's minor, but because of how it's written, it had to come back.
He went from five foot four on an existing deck, and he wants to go to eight feet on the same existing deck.
There's no setback changes, there's no lot coverage changes. My opinion as one member, I see, I see it as a minor change.
I do too.
I agree.
I agree.
The reason why I said eight, I, based on the plan, based, I, I was looking for the six point seven, but I wasn't sure how detailed he's having.
Makes total sense.
I said, look, should we just say eight, just in case, you know, when things are framing, things aren't perfect, you know?
But did he also have a date question? Or you did?
Basically, some other extension for ninety days. That wasn't a conversation we had, but I said you could always ask the, the board here.
During extensions, don't wanna go two years.
No, you can, you can put any date on it.
How much time, what do we have in the original, how much time did he have the first permit?
Two years.
Two years.
And he's, and he's, how long into the two years?
It ends in July.
July eighteenth expires. I, I went to Mike last week to pull the building, to pull the, of the stop the work agreement, so the building permit, assuming that, once I get the building permit, then, uh, I'm gonna, I'm not sure how this works.
We just extended a year.
Granted, that the finding expires.
Would one year give you enough time from the, from the, from the end?
All you gotta do is start it, right?
Well, they have to have the application at least submitted.
So what, what are you asking for, sir?
Okay, I was, well, I, I was asking, but.
That and how much time?
Ninety, I'm assuming ninety days, I mean.
Why don't we give you a year?
Oh, that's, that's fine.
We're not going there.
I'm hoping we have a contractor as soon as we get this thing started, but if we get a year, that's.
Yeah, I think it's a minor modification, that's.
I think we all agree with that.
It's a minor modification and, and a motion to extend a year.
Right, all set.
Even though it was not.
Yes, I can, what I can do is, um, write up another decision with it saying that the extension is minor.
I can make a motion, it's up to you.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we find, um, the fact that the applicant's existing written finding. All right, all right, I'd like to make a motion that, that David Delisandro of twenty-one Wilson's Groves. Existing written finding, the mo, the modification that is in front of us, which is, um, the, uh, he's already obtained a existing finding. Of an addition on his house on an existing deck of six point seven feet. He'd like to extend that out to approximately, no, out to a maximum of eight feet on that same existing deck. I'd like to make a motion that this board finds that that is a minor modification. I'll make it in the second motion, reference to the extension maybe, or do you like to wrap it?
Just wrap it all up.
Okay, I'd like to also add to that motion that we give the applicant an additional year. Uh, above and beyond his existing deadline of, what is existing?
July eighteenth.
July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, so he has until July eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen to make application for a building permit on this project. To secure a building permit.
We have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
I, I did have two, I had four items, I did have four items, but I didn't get a chance.
Well, we've cleaned up two of them for you. Let's move on to three and four.
I'm assuming the third one is probably not even an issue, but I, since I was here, I just wanna make sure. In the original written finding, it discussed the reason for my addition was to move the laundry in the shower. I've since added a toilet and a sink in the actual, that's not listed in.
It's inside the footprint, that's, doesn't matter.
Okay, I, I, I assume so.
No, no, no.
Okay, just wanna say.
We understand.
My fourth, my fourth question was, I didn't know, at the, at the actual end of the, uh, deck. I didn't know if I would be allowed to cantilever the deck in the additional beyond.
That's, now, now you're pushing it.
I know, I know, that's why I'm here, I'm asking.
As one member, the, as one member, the fourth one would ta, would be, would be a major modification.
Right, that would.
Require an additional filing.
Additional filing. Three out of four's not bad. You know, that's still a pretty good.
The original, I would still be, uh, one, eleven point seven feet away from the property line, it would be ten point seven feet.
What's your current lot coverage?
I honestly don't know. I, I, I don't.
And you know what, you would, as one member, you'd have to make applications, show the lot coverage, go through the whole application process again for that. If you wanted to extend it, extend it six inches.
If you're already over twenty percent on the, on the lot, then I don't think it's ever gonna happen.
Okay, that, that's fine, I, I can, I can deal with it, there isn't, there isn't a lot.
Hold on, we gotta. You can put a patio, a stone patio in it, makes for a patio.
Existing is, oh, thirty-five percent.
That's not considered lot coverage.
We might take back what we already gave you, I want you to know.
Run.
You might wanna run out the door.
Yeah, and it also looks like, um, we're, we're just being upfront with you.
Yep, go right ahead.
You, you're already way over by ten percent and thirty-five percent. Right now, your side yard is three point eight. With this proposed bump out, not, not when you're looking at, but the cantilever. You're already looking at three point six. Now, if you want to extend that deck, now you're going to three point two. So you're getting closer and closer to that property line.
The reason why you're able to do it, you're doing, you're doing it on an existing deck.
It's the nature of Wilson's Grove. It's the nature.
Right, he's not extending anything.
Right, uh, but if you want to do it, you're gonna have to refile for that, or should, we're just letting you know.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I figured, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Put a patio in. Stone patio.
Okay, I'm done.
All right. Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
So, on the toilet and sink, that's okay?
No, you can do whatever you want inside the toilet.
Because there wasn't really in the finding, I didn't know what was.
Yeah, but what you put in there isn't really relevant to this board, for the most part.
On some situation.
Well, for the most part. I mean, if you put another bedroom in or something. But, yeah.
Yeah, what a really rule on that, the interior.
You're all set, sir. With the extension, do I need to do anything? Does it have to be filed again with the courthouse, or is it, it's all?
You have to make Mary Ann happy, that's all, whatever she wants.
I will type up understanding decision.
Yeah.
And then you can get that.
And then we'll, we'll sign.
Yep. All right.
Good luck.
Enjoy your Fourth of July.
Thank you too.
By the way, nice job on the preparation.
You do better than some of the professionals, I can guarantee that.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Good thing you didn't throw it away. Good thing you didn't throw it away.
Yes.
Yeah, we should include that.
Uh, we'll, you have the last one anyway, don't worry about it.
I gave it a run, run.
What?
The thing I handed you, could you hand it back? Did I handed you?
The pen?
No.
What did you hand me?
You read that decision, that information.
This right here?
Yes, the one you walked up, thank, very.
And you can have your pen back too.
I've gotta make sure with a few ones. You took it from me earlier.
All right.
Now you tell me.
All right, Sharon, would you read the next other business?
Vote to reorganize board member appointments.
All right, so we need to reorganize the board, creating a chairman, vice chairman, and clerk position. So who will accept nominations, we'll start with the chairman. Do we have any nomination?
I nominate Jonathan Ferbush as chairman of the board.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
You wouldn't let that echo die, huh?
Okay, let's move to vice chairman.
I nominate Bill as our chairman, as vice chairman of the board.
I second.
Do we have any other? We're gonna stick with that?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, as one member, I think it's a great decision.
So do I. All right, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
All right, clerk.
I nominate Ron Bonvy for clerk.
I like that.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we clean that part.
What's next?
All right, Sharon, what's the next other business?
Approve June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting minutes.
That's a motion?
That was a motion, was it?
Move ya. You have to get moved to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Brad?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Night.